Lead us.
Stand for the pledge, everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anthony.
I'm also attorney here in Fayette County. I'm also counsel for the county commission. I wanted to let everybody know, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. A public hearing on the request of zoning change application was held on July 10th. And at that time, the county commission took evidence and listened to the arguments of the members of the public. The purpose of today's meeting is for the county commissioners to vote on that application. And if they want to provide comments to the public as to why they're voting, they certainly have the ability to do that. So the, the only purpose of today's meeting is for the commission to vote on the application and to announce its decision. And as I said, the, the public was given the opportunity to participate in this process on July 10th from the county commission. If you attended that, a public hearing, the county commission at the conclusion of the hearing related to the public that they were going to take the matter under advisement, which means they were going to consider it further. And then today, the announcement is going to be made as to what their final decision is. Please, we, we need to make sure that everybody remains civil and remains appropriate in terms of their behavior. If you feel like you may not be able to do that, then I would ask you to step outside at this point. But otherwise, certainly everyone's free to remain in here, but just, we need to make sure we maintain appropriate decorum during the course of the meeting. And it should your understanding. Is our, what we have to say will have a bearing on their decision or have already made the decision, is what you're saying?
No, they have not made the decision.
Okay, so we say it did have a bearing on their decision. What you, did you appear, and sir, I wasn't, I had a, I had a scheduling conflict and I missed the first part of the hearing on July 10th. Were you present at that hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what you, what you, did you speak to the commission at that time?
Yes, sir.
And what was related to the public by the members? I'm sorry, what was related to the county commission by the members of the public during that July 10th meeting? Will certainly be considered by the county commission and has certainly been considered by the county commission in rendering whatever decision they're going to make.
This is the first time I've ever found out, and I'm a, I live in the whispering of homeowners association. And this is the first time I've ever heard of anything. And the only way I found out is the attorney that lives near me called me up and told me about it. But I didn't know none of this just for the.
Okay, do you, do you have any question?
No, sir, I just thought you said everybody knew about it.
No, I did not say everybody knew. I, I said that we had a public hearing on July 10th. And the people that were here on July 10th had the opportunity to present evidence, information, and arguments to the county commission about this. I mean, and sir, to address your, I, I will say this, I think the county commission tries to notify the public to the best of my knowledge, the requirements of our zoning ordinance were complied with. And in terms of notification of neighbors, Angela would probably.
Two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, so under the ordinance, anyone who owns property within two hundred and fifty feet of the property at issue has to be notified. I don't know if you live within two hundred and fifty feet.
I think I did.
Yes.
Well, we do. Well, I can only, I can only say to you that I, I believe based on what Angela has related to me that the notification requirements were complied with as part of the hearing process. Yes, Dr. Stowers?
Could I just say to this guy, because he's not gonna say it? He was in Cleveland Clinic getting treatment for cancer, radiation and medical stuff. So I don't think we called Cleveland Clinic telling about the meeting. He's got an excused absence, I think is what I'm trying to say.
Well, and I understand that. And, and the unfortunate reality is, is that it's not, it's, it's not possible for any public entity to accommodate every single citizen. I mean, the only thing that we can do is, is try to notify the public that something is happening and give you the opportunity to participate. But it, it, it's not realistic that every single person who may have an interest in this decision is going to be able to appear. I mean, one of the, the unfortunate realities is the county commission meetings are typically held during business hours and most people work during business hours, eight, eight AM to five PM. And a lot of people cannot miss work to attend the county commission meetings. And that is the unfortunate reality of the, of the situation. But, but in any event.
One other question, how about the ten days that last time when we were at the meeting, they said you had to make a decision in ten days. Can they modify things any, any way they want to?
Oh, that says that. That's not, that's not what the Uniform Development Code says. What the Uniform Development Code says is that the county commission should try to issue a decision within ten days. I mean, and basically, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to miss words with you, but generally speaking, in legal parlance, if a statute or law or ordinance uses the word shall, then that's an obligation that is not subject to manipulation or deviation. But the, what, what is the exact language?
It says, the county commission will endeavor to make a decision on the request and recommendation within ten working days. So endeavor maybe.
So basically, what endeavor is just a fancy word for try. So it essentially means that the county commission should try to issue the decision within ten days, but they're not obligated to issue it.
And Anthony, I think it's important to point out part of the reason for the delay. I mean, there, there were a few reasons. There were several issues that came up because of Commissioner Brennaman's and I, my split. We were split as, as of the last meeting, at least it appeared to be, because we didn't vote, but we were discussing it. We were split. So Anthony had to research a lot of things to see what that means, like what happens if, if we split. So it wasn't that we were just kind of sitting on it and not making a decision. It was more that we had a lot of information we needed, and then we had to schedule around everybody and, and try to get in there. So that's why we didn't have it on the agenda yesterday, because we just had a meeting yesterday morning, but everybody, the parties couldn't be here. And so, you know, we, we scheduled it today to make sure Mr. Luises could have a lawyer present. So, you know, that's just, it's just the way, way it goes. But, but we weren't just, you know, fooling around. We kind of figure out what our options were if we ended up in a situation where we had a split vote.
And I think also during that time, I believe Commissioner Brennan has spent a significant amount of time deviating into prior zoning applications as well. But, but anyway, at this point, I'll turn it over to the media question.
Okay.
Do you want to wait for Shannon?
But, oh, yeah, he should be here. For her side, so she'll be on it. Angela, can you pass these out? Angela is or going to pass you out what this area can actually be used for as B2. It's on the front and the back. Of course, there cannot be a casino going in there. There's been words of that. But the only way a casino could go in is if the West Virginia Legislature actually approves it. And from what I've heard, they're not going to be approving anymore. So you take that off the list of what we heard. So those are the things that actually can happen in a B2. Angela, can you go ahead and read the filing procedures of what an applicant would have to do?
Yes.
Is the mic on?
Yes. All right, this is in our Bay County Unified Development Code. Filing procedures, request for rezoning approval of a property. A request for rezoning of property shall be filed on prescribed forms with the zoning enforcement office. The zoning enforcement office will identify joining property owners for notification of the hearings. The applicant must submit the tax map and parcel numbers for the list of properties, along with stamped and addressed envelopes for each of the names and addresses of property owners in the affected area. The zoning office will conduct a formal review of this completed application. The review will include the recommendation of the Bay County Transition Team. The enforcement office will endeavor to endeavor to complete the review within ten working days. The zoning enforcement office will publish a legal advertisement describing the request for rezoning in the local newspaper of general circulation fifteen days prior to the scheduled public hearing before the planning commission. The prepared envelopes notifying the property owners located within two hundred and fifty feet of the affected property and a homeowners association board member of the affected subdivision and submitted by the applicant will be mailed at the same time of the legal advertisement is submitted to the newspaper. The planning commission will hold a duly scheduled public hearing on the rezoning request and the planning commission will make a recommendation to the county commission. The zoning enforcement officer will prepare a written report of the decision within fifteen calendar days of a decision made by the planning commission. The county commission will hold a public meeting to hear the planning commission's recommendation. Attendees at the public meeting will be notified of the date and time of the county commission's public hearing. The county commission will endeavor to make a decision on the request and recommendation within ten working days after the county commission hearing. If the request for rezoning is approved by the county commission, the receive approval and will be formally notified by mail by the zoning enforcement office. An original court order will be signed by the county commission and will be filed in the clerk of court of Fayette County within three working days. The zoning enforcement office will amend the zoning map to reflect the approved rezoning. If the request for rezoning is denied by the county commission, the applicant will be formally notified in writing by the zoning enforcement, enforcement officer of the denial and the right to appeal the decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If the request is denied by the Board of Zoning requests, a Board of Zoning appeals, the applicant will have the right to appeal the decision of the Fayette County Circuit Court within thirty days of the Board of Zoning Appeals decision. A court order will be signed by the county commission and filed with the clerk of court of Fayette County within three working days and a copy of the order will be mailed to the applicant. If the rezoning is denied by the county commission, there is a one-year moratorium before another request to rezone said property can be submitted. That is in all accordance.
Thank you. Can you pull the map up, please? And Angela, you have a larger version?
Yes, this is what was submitted by the. It's unconfident.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You want some here?
Yes.
That's what was submitted by. With a bigger copy than that.
Okay, Angela, can you remind us of the application of the squares?
Stand over here, sir. So the application submitted, I don't. He is requesting plan development. So just so everyone knows, plan development is your plan. You create the plan of what you want with your property. So the applicant has a large parcel of land that he wants majority to remain rural residential. And he has two portions that are in the green. One is area to be rezoned, the two, as a two point nine two acre parcel. And the other one is a four point one six acre parcel. He is requesting those two properties be used for B2. And I'm pretty sure that this was rendered by an engineer, basically an aerial square, not a survey, but an aerial. And everything else would be remain rural residential.
And then what's the distance from the houses? Do you remember that up top ahead or?
I do not know. I don't, I don't measure. I mean, we could. And the closest neighbors, I mean, this is several acres to these closest neighbors, but all of these are within two hundred and fifty feet of. These houses, they should have been notified as well as everyone in the. There's a yellow line. I'm not sure. That's an engineer. It may have, let's see. Also, I'm suggesting, okay. That is a bright way. Right. So that would be access from Hinkle. Where that would be private access.
Okay. The property that we're discussing is in the, I'm going to call it light blue, sky blue color. Can you guys see that?
It's highlighted. Yeah, there you go.
The two pieces that has been marked is one that is a distance, it's where there's one that's close to sheets, which would be the two point nine two acres. But it looks like it's away from the sheets itself at the corner of the right of way going up. And then the other is partial way up halfway in. I, I attempted to go and look and see if there were any stakes. There were no stakes. There was just several different marks in the ground and it really didn't indicate that. But from what Angela read to us, a mapping isn't necessary. Partially, thank you.
Did you add a question? Yes, no.
No, sorry. There have been. I have multiple cases that have come up from two thousand and five. However, there were some that wasn't found. We couldn't get through all of the files in order to pull them on. I do have twenty-five of them. It's been about a split where fourteen have been approved and eleven was not approved. One of the ones that was not approved that I feel was common sense was you can't put a beer, a place that sells beer and liquor in between two schools. That was just one of the ones that came in. I have asked, and I would say car counts at Mall Road and Appalachian Drive, Hinkle Road and Fayette Town Square. These are the most up to date and they're from April the thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Going into sheets, turning into sheets, whether it's across from Walmart or turning right or left. You have eight hundred and eighty-six cars going in, and this was run from six in the morning until ten o'clock and then picked back up at three o'clock, running to seven PM, because those are the heaviest travel times. So going into sheets, you had eight hundred and eighty-six cars. Going into Walmart, you had two thousand six hundred and fifteen cars. Southbound on nineteen fifty-three eighty-three and northbound on nineteen sixty-one sixty-seven. When you take a look at Hinkle Road, going, and I'm just using these as references.
You did this. It's pretty amazing.
I helped to reach him.
Oh, okay. I didn't even know anybody was actively tracking these.
Yes. I have everything along nineteen. Dove Road, turning into Dove to Doves, I'm just using them as a reference point. Four hundred and sixty-two cars turns in there. Going to the Exxon.
John, I'm sorry, how many?
Four hundred and sixty-two. Going into the Exxon, you have two hundred and ninety-eight. Again, southbound fifty-nine seventy-four and northbound sixty-two seventy-five. Appalachian Drive Mall Road. Going to, okay, tell how long I've been around. Going toward the chuck wagon, the old chuck wagon. It's a five hundred and twelve cars there. And going into Kroger, that road is five hundred and seventy-eight. And then you have the same on northbound and southbound of nineteen. So again, those are eight hours. It does show the traffic counts. So I wanted to make sure I had all of those. If this is approved, first we learned that there's no extras that need to be done. The person can just make an application and the application gets turned in. Now, I'm making a request right now that on the September eleventh meeting of the county commission, we make a, or have a discussion and decision on upgrading our Unified Development Code. Having it reworked. The code itself is, has a lot of ambiguous things going on. So we would like to update it and I recommend updating it, because there's some things that needs to be corrected. I would like to see if you make an application, you need to tell where your utilities are. You don't have to tell us what type of business it is. If it's going to be B2, there's a list of them. And the reason why is because some people have proprietary information. If the applicant had a way of taking the rocks out there and turning them into silver, that applicant wouldn't want that trade secret to get out to anyone until they start manufacturing. So as far as what the business is, no. But utilities and having it actually documented, mapped, laid out by survey, I, I feel that should be there. So in order to get a commercial building permit in Fayette County, prior to submitting plans for a commercial property, zoning has to be approved. At that time, when you go to try to get a, a building permit, you must show a complete survey site of the plan. A set of detailed construction plans for commercial structures to include structural plumbing, HVAC, electrical and smoke fire protection. Well, and septic permits from health department or water and sewer permits from the appropriate authority. All subcontractors must be listed on the application with West Virginia contract license number. Contractors licensing is issued through the West Virginia Department of Labor located by three oh four five five eight seventy-eight ninety, or the West Virginia Division of Labor. If you're using manufacturer trust, all the specifications have to be sent in. If you're using land beams or I-joist, specifications and designs have to be there. Steel beams required a West Virginia engineer seal. Assessor statement has to be completed. One copy of a compliance report for energy, which will include the following information on lighting, building envelope and mechanical checklist. Information on how outside will be made up and how the air will be supplied. Most improved, once most important is approval from the Fire Marshal's Office with your appropriate equipment to put out any fire. And net last is any structures over seventy-six hundred square feet. All construction drawings must bear the original seal designed professional in the state of West Virginia. One set of construction plans will be returned with the appropriate comments. So that's what happens when you try to get a building permit for a commercial property. So a lot of that stuff should be on, I feel, should be on in order to get the property changed. And that's why I'm going to be asking the commission to update this book. It just doesn't give us the right information. Plus, there's, there's several things that just makes you scratch your head. Mr. Tyler, you have anything?
Are you?
You may have a chance to get, do you have anything you want to add?
To, to that?
To anything.
Well, yeah, are, are you, are you finished with what you want to say? I expressed some of these at, at the last meeting, but I've had more time to have some conversations and, and make some calls and do some research. I was very concerned with how the planning commission handled the hearing before it. And looking into it, three of the five members were present. It's my belief that at least one of those members present had a very clear conflict of interest and should not have voted on the matter. Although I, I will, I will say, I do not believe he realized that. I do not think that was intentional. I talked to one of the other three members who told me that he did not vote, which tells me that only one member voted on this out of five. I'm waiting to see if he corrects that in the planning commission minutes, but I, you know, because they, the head of the commission thought he did vote in favor of it. So he said he did not. The other thing Commissioner Brennaman touched on a little bit is, one of the planning commission members mentioned that the reason that he was voting against the application was because the applicant had not provided information on what he planned to do with the property. And that is not something we require in our application. And Commissioner Brennaman said the reason for it, like we just don't want to deter people from coming to this county and bringing their businesses here, developing and building homes for us by, you know, making them tell us everything they're planning to do. And we also, you know, you know, property owners, there may be somebody, if an applicant comes in and says, well, I've got this big, you know, company wants to come in. And there may be a property owner that hears that and then has a better, more desirable piece of property in the county and tries to take that deal out from under. You know, there are a lot of reasons that, that I, you know, don't think it's a good idea to require people to say what they're doing outside of the bounds of the zoning. Now, if there are things that, types of businesses that, that we are starting to see, they're trying to sneak into the zoning, we can address that in the revision of the code and that subject that you know, that, you know, I think we, we need to regularly do, because, you know, years ago, we didn't have vape stores and things like that. So I do think we need to consider, you know, what types of things we're listing in those categories. But, but I don't think we should go beyond. So that was another concern I had is that they were asking for information. They weren't allowed to consider as a part of their decision. And at least one member said, I don't have enough information. And, and that information was, I don't know what you're going to do with your property. So I don't want anybody being asked that question. This isn't because it's Commissioner Luises. It's because that's just, you know, where I stand on that issue for business owners and property owners in general. And considering this issue, I looked at several things. One is I looked at the zoning of the other properties in the area, and I realized that there's a residential area budding in this area. But there are a lot of commercial and, and light industrial property right there in the area. I also looked and considered our Fayette County conflict. And that's our strategic plan for the county, where we want the county to go, what we expect is going to happen. And what our priorities are. And this commission, at least since I've been on it, since June twenty-one, has, has heavily prioritized economic development and infrastructure. And they, they're very closely tied, because we can't get people to come here if they can't have water and they can't have broadband and all that stuff. So those are our big, our big things. Obviously, I also considered the public concerns that were presented. And I thought some were presented by people who were directly, you know, affected and who had adjacent properties and some were presented by people, I think, who had competing business interests and things like that. So, you know, I weighed that accordingly. Some of the concerns that were raised was the safety issue, and I'm guessing that's what you were getting at, John, with, with these traffic numbers. And I stated then, and, and I believe now that, that that's something, you know, if we, we had the, it come up even with this visitor center that we were thinking about using the Boy Scout Center as the Bay County Visitor Center. And people were saying, well, the traffic, there's no light there and all this stuff. But the thing is, we can put in ones. We can't say, because there's no light there now, that we should never, ever build on that property. You know, those things are things that farm highways. You know, those things are things that front highways don't have to study and put in place. For for safety. I mean, we have a light at Walmart that, you know, we have probably more wrecks there than anywhere else in Fayette County. The. Infrastructure included in the application to me, that's a property owner issue. I mean, other than with the. When people are trying to put a bunch of different septic tanks on their property and stuff, it might be a health department issue. And that there are provisions in our code already for that sort of thing that Angela has has educated me on, but. But as far as will, can you get electricity to the property or can you get water to the property to me? You know, if this applicant. Gets this rezoned a business and can't get enough water to the property to to support a business, that's his problem. That's not, you know, something that's, you know, to me, something that. I'm worried about. If he can't get somebody to give him the right of way, one of the. Citizens has said that, you know, I'm not going to give anybody electricity right of way over my my property. To me, you know. He heard that and still wants to apply. So, you know. To me, that's just something you're going to have to work out. It may not be developed at all. But to me, that's not a zoning issue. That's a development issue. The proximity to the resident. Residential homes that are there was another consideration. And there was a several hundred feet buffer, like I think one was the smallest one was about three hundred and fifty feet. And I think that's sufficient. You know, I did consider that and I do understand that. I also consider, you know. Where we're talking about, you know, there's all this commercial and kind of touched on this already, but there's all this commercial property there. It's different than putting, you know, a gas station in the middle, you know, of a, you know, residential neighborhood of Whispering, Ohio, two thousand, that's, you know, just kind of sticking it right in the middle. So I was kind of looking at that and trying to, you know, come at it from how I would build our residents there and. So. Those things said, those those were the considerations that that I had in mind and that is what. Has. Made me believe that it is still in the best interest of the county. To go ahead and allow. Or overturn the planning commission's recommendation, allow this rezoning because. Raised. While, you know, valid can be mitigated. And so for that reason, I am going to move that we.
Okay, just to be just to be clear, I'm assuming I'm referring from your motion that you're looking to approve the application for the zoning change?
Yes, I'm I'm not really sure and Angela will have to tell me. I mean, are we, I thought our job was to affirm or. overturn or. But it. Basically, you guys are either accepting or rejecting the recommendation, but then the follow up would be to approve the application for the rezoning because then I have to do it for her if that's the. Okay, so I'll revise my motion to withdraw my initial motion and revise it to say. I move that we reject the recommendation of the planning commission. Well, that I was going to do that separately, but but we can do it together and approve the rezoning application.
I'm going to make a few comments because we can go into the comments. Angela. For your. Committee. I recommend that the chair. And the members. Are familiar with what exactly their job is. I want you to revisit that with them. To make sure that they know what they're looking at. What their options are. And make sure that they completely understand.
But John, if I could add, I mean, I I really think that's something that we need. You know, to have a lawyer go over with them, you know, with with your assistance, like maybe revision of code or, you know. Discussion of of the code, but the scope of of their responsibilities. I mean, that was another question that I had had Anthony look into, like, I mean, can we? Because I wanted to send it back to planning commission. I mean, that's just where I was coming from because I wanted them to have more people there. I wanted them to make a disfully informed decision. With more people there based on the things they're allowed to consider and Anthony, you know, advised that. Can't do it, can't make them do what they're supposed to do, can't, you know, that our hands were tied and. John Arden Cap was like, do we send it back to the board that we think there were some concerns with or? Or what? But I do think I think that's a good idea and I think we need to have. You know, ask somebody from Anthony's office or or outside counsel to. To meet with them and kind of give them an overview. I mean, I, you know, there is a lawyer on the board, but he is not, you know, the lawyer toward the board, so it's not fair to ask him to. Advise the board on those sorts of things.
Second. I do have an email. That states that the applicant. Had some opportunities to sell the product, the property, but couldn't do it because the way he was zoned. So his intentions are to. To sell. So be it, but if he's willing to build. I. Make sure that you follow all the proper procedures.
So to be clear, just to protect you, this was not from the applicant to Commissioner Brennaman. This was from the applicant to our zoning officer.
You know, this is a, this is a tough job. At times. You either have a a yes or a no and no baby. So it's like you have a red light for no, a green light for yes, or there's no yellow light. If I, if I look at it with what I would like to see versus what was provided. I would give one answer. Following. In this book in the unified development code Fayette County, West Virginia. The applicant has asked for it. And there's nothing that's stopping it. So I will second your. Motion. All in favor?
Aye. Question adjourned.
Oh, yes, please.